Ladies and gentlemen, I would now call the Bogalusa City Special Council meeting to court. We're going to open the meeting up with the invocation made by Pastor Nathaniel, "Thought it about the place to believe."
"Greatest father, we humbly bow on your presence on today, thanking you for your love, your kindness, and your grace. Ask me Lord God that you would look down upon this meeting, this council, oh God, and the citizens who have come to share their concerns, and that your God that you would touch and that you would speak and that you would bring, bridge unity, and help us dear God to come to a reasonable conclusion whereby we can move forward. We ask your blessing continued upon the board, upon our mayor, and upon this city of Bogalusa. Shine your light upon us, oh God. Embrace us and keep us in your loving guidance. For we ask it all in Christ Jesus' name. Amen."
"I declare to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with your leading justice for all."
"To the place sitting attorney Bogalusa. This is a special call meeting to fill the vacancies left by Dr. Daniel P. K. This first portion of the meeting tonight would be only to fill the vacancies left by Dr. K. There are about five appointees or nominees. The first one to receive four votes wins. At the time a person's name is called, if you want to endorse that person or speak in favor of them, you are free to. But if you want to speak against a candidate, we're not doing any of that tonight. If you speak for someone tonight, we're going to try to keep this meeting as orderly and peaceful as possible. And again, thank you all for coming out. This is what makes good government, participation. Thank you."
"Second row, please."
"Councilwoman Douglas?"
"Here."
"Councilwoman Smith?"
"Here."
"Councilwoman Kaye?"
"Here."
"Councilwoman Tipples?"
"Here."
"Mrs. Ellis?"
"Here."
"First person, Urban?"
"Here."
"As we said, this is a special call meeting to appoint someone to fill the vacancy of the Honorable Dr. Daniel D. K. Bogalusa City Council members have received some names that were placed on a list. Each council member will give those names if you look at, and think of for tonight's meeting. In no random order, I will call off the names that will be voting on tonight. Keith Merrill, Marvin Austin, Marilyn D. Lot, Mac McGee, and Michael Lowry. In no certain order will those names be called. We will call that name, and if anyone, if any one of the candidates or nominees will step to the podium and speak, you will be given two minutes to speak on his reason and why he wants to be a candidate. If someone in the audience wants to speak for him, they may do so, you will have two minutes to speak on that candidate. There'll be no derogatory statements made by any other candidates when they come to the podium or if their name is mentioned. And we thank you for your kindness in that area. Like I said, there's no random name or no random way it's going to be done. The first candidate that receives the most votes wins the nominee, and the nominees will be over. That's how it has to go. First person we have on this list, Mr. Marvin Austin.
"Mr. Austin, could you please state your name?"
"Thank you for your consideration."
"Name and address for it."
"Marvin."
"Name and the address for it."
"Oh, Marvin Austin Senior, 736 Florence Avenue, Bogalusa, Louisiana."
"Thank you. You can't forget."
"I believe that from my experience, that I can get an accent, try to lay out the message, and reach out to candidates. First of all, I love my family. I love my wife. I love my children. And I love my city. Regardless of where this way comes from, Bogalusa has an opportunity to be a great place. But we're going to have to work together. You've got to lose some of your personalities at one time, and come together as a community. As you can see, it's a cross section in its light, it's showing your concern for that community. I came home forty-six years ago, and my living room, on Young Brook Road, a young man, just like I was there, Michael Richmond's campaign was put together in my living room. He is president of Boston, and he wanted to do something for his community. And then I told him, and then he changed his mind, and threw them away. But we as a community are going to have to come together, council and mayor, work with each other to bring our community together. I want to do it, I want to do it for not only my children, I want to do it for all the children. Thank you."
"The next person on the list would be Ms. Marilyn Lot."
"Is she not here?"
"Yes, she is." "They went to check, and they said she was not here." "I'll text again and go with that."
"Please do, it's like, it's like a transfer."
"So might we know if anyone wants to come out? Okay."
"You're waiting for Mr. Rick, we've got to move one step back. We have a, we have a fellow on the floor, Marvin Austin. Was anyone asked for? Church?"
"Church Rick, Mrs. Marilyn is going to be a candidate.
She is a candidate, her cause, her book, her experience in the government have right to grant. I would prefer my candidate." "Well, I think Marvin Austin, we struck his name, and the next will move on, Ms. Marilyn Lot."
"Ms. Lot, please state your name and address for the record. You will have two minutes to explain to the public why you won't be a candidate for the temporary request in District B.
My name is Marilyn Delores Lot. I reside at 1502 North Avenue. I am interested in serving in a temporary position appointment for District B council seat because I live in that district. I have communicated with the former councilperson on numerous occasions regarding improvements for that district. And all due respect to our former councilperson, I would like to continue her legacy and be instrumental to all the citizens of the district to meet the needs of the district citizens. I will remove myself out of the way in order to serve the people of that district." "I have experience in grant writing. I also have governmental experiences that I could bring to the table to improve policies for the city council. I am a person who believes in serving people. Not for self gain, the $400 a month, I don't really need it. I will serve if nothing is given to me as a pay. Because I feel strongly about this temporary position because there are needs that need to be continued in that district. And I'm willing to serve if you all give me a chance, if you give me..." And I'm willing to serve if you all give me a chance, if you give me your whole confidence, you will not be sorry about it. And I, at this time, I will say that I am a person of my word, if I say I'm helping, I'm gonna do it. If I'm not gonna call you back, I'll tell you I can't call you back. If I can't respond, I'll let you know that as well. I think we have to respond to the needs of the people. When the people call you, you ought to be respectful and courteous enough to return your calls.
Thank you, Ms. Lot.
Called for a vote by road call, Ms. Marilyn D. Lot.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cates?
From what I understand, first individual that the two votes just didn't, that shouldn't be
Who isn't, would like to speak, Ms. Lot? Aye.
Let's, let's, let's borrow a line right here.
My name is Marvin Austin, 736 Florence Avenue.
All right, boy, come on now. Look at that.
All right, I, I come to you as a concerned citizen, I come to you as a parent, as a grandparent, I come to you as the leader of this historic organization of City of Bogalusa, President of Bogalusa, Voting Leader. Ms. Marilyn Lot is well qualified. Ms. Marilyn Lot knows the function of government, like she said, grant writer, federal government, and state government. She has experience in contract services. It would be a dishonor for us to turn our back on someone with this vast experience of cause of personality. And I am acting in this council to support the candidacy of Ms. Marilyn Lot. Thank you.
Mr. Miller, I want to remind you to state your name and address for the record, and we've got two minutes.
Joel.
Please, y'all, we got a while for this, to get things, please, and just say it's time to get through the, get through the meeting.
State your name and address for the record.
Fine thirty, Joel Milton, Fine Thirty to Austin Street. I know it's kind of hard for anybody to hold applause for such as, uh, the candidate, it's Ms. Lot. I'd like to second most, what Mr. Marvin Austin says, I also accept what she says. She did a great service to the City of Bogalusa, whatever passes that she could serve in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Farrell, nineteen thirty-one Dwood Place. From all the candidates been named here tonight, I feel like Ms. Lot is the most qualified one for this position. I think she should be replacing Ms. Keys because I think the neighbors, the, the system of this community would want that her to replace Ms. Keys. So let's get on the boat to Ms. Keys, and don't think about doing anything, thank you.
Susan Ratliff-Hines.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Susan Ratliff-Hines, one thirty-two Liddy Drive, Bogalusa, Louisiana. I worked with Ms. Marilyn Lot with the USSS, she is a woman of honor. She's dependable, respected, and she will do much for us.
Thank you. All right, you have two minutes, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Deborah Corsetti, seven six four Marshall Richardson Road.
Sir, the last person in line, what is your name?
Tobias Roberts.
No, sir, not you, the last, the last person in line, what is your name, sir?
Deborah Corsetti.
As a best yourself, there will be no more speaking on Ms. Ms. Lot.
All right, I'm going to reset the clock, Sam, and you already stated your name and address for the record, go ahead, this person, you have two minutes.
Ms. Lot sounds like she has the experience and qualifications to be a great replacement for Dr. Daniel Keys. The citizens, um, seem to support her, and I just want to say one other thing, and that is, to be fair to all candidates, I think all candidates should be able to speak before you, like, or anybody.
Tobias Roberts, eleven twenty-seven Avenue J. What y'all heard from everybody, including Ms. Lot, was a person with experience, some person that deserves the job, somebody that's qualified for the job. So, I know a lot of y'all sitting here, y'all might not want her, but she the best thing for Bogalusa, the best name for Bogalusa. Yeah, all the candidates that y'all put up, they probably could do the job too. But, you know, come on now, we need real leadership, something we lacking in. If anybody can vote no to that, you probably don't need to be on this council.
All right, Mr. Corsetti, uh, you will have two minutes, please state your name and address for the productive, please.
Richard Corsetti, seven sixty-four Marshall Richardson Road, Bogalusa. I'd just like to say, Ms. Lot, I think would work out very good because I think I heard it's, it's the same district as Daniel Keys. I think you can't get any better than that. So, it's great for her, and I hope she gets it. Thank you.
My name is Pastor Darrell Self, uh, one oh four Central Drive, Bogalusa, Louisiana. Ms. Lot, she's a neighbor to the church that I pastor. Ms. Lot, she will call me often whenever she sees something that's not right going on. And I appreciate that because they let me know that there's eyes in the community, she lives in this community. Please, please, don't pass her by.
Mr. Chester, uh, please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Melvin Abrams, nineteen oh seven Bee Chalavas, Bee Bogalusa, Louisiana. I just wanted to say, um, Ms. Lot would be a great candidate, where she has worked hard already in the entire city, and it'll be hard to pass her up, and I just ask you guys to take a closer look at her, and let's bring her on board. Thank you.
Okay, um, can I see the nominee list again? Okay, I thought my name was on it, I just came in, I believe I'd be a politician because I'm too honest.
State your, state your name and address for the record.
Do I need to at this point? Um, I just wanted to say what we need to do is get someone up there who's not a dear stuff in this town, um, you know. Uh, Bradley Thayers, one forty-one Cedar Row, Bogalusa, and, um, I want to suspend my campaign. Um, it's odd, um, the stuff we have going on in this town, guys, it's not a good look. I mean, fifteen-year-old kids, shitting sixteen-year-old kids, hey, that's not normal, we need to do something. Okay, and I'm supporting Ms. Lot, okay?
Let me make this up to you clearly, because you may not know this, you may not have known this before tonight, but if you're appointed to this position, and you get to position tonight, you cannot run in November. Or in the future in the batch, I just want to, and I'd like to ask you, someone wasn't aware of that. Ms. Lot makes you aware of that. I just want to bring it back up there, thank you for your patience. The next person we have, who's named for you tonight, we haven't got to finish, but that's, uh, was a problem. Next candidate?
Any speakers, Mike?
Next candidate, nominated tonight, who put his name on the list, is Mr. Keith Merrill. Uh, I would like to let that look and ask that you would, uh, support Ms. Marilyn Lot. Next, the next person, the opposite of tonight, Mr. Michael O'Ree.
Good afternoon, Mr. O'Ree, you will have two minutes to state why you want to be a filling candidate to fulfill the honorable Miss Dr. Daniel Keys's position tonight. Uh, you're first going to state your name and address for the record, and once you act, after that, your two minutes will start.
Michael O'Ree, sixteen, Faraday Lewis Lane, Bogalusa, Louisiana. First of all, I want to say good evening to everyone, and I thank God for the opportunity to be here on the speaker draw tonight. Um, first of all, Danielle Keys was a personal friend of mine, she's been my boss for the past fifteen years. Um, I was Danielle's campaign manager when she first ran for public office, and I encouraged her to pursue it because I felt she could do a great job. I'm aware of the projects she's been working on. I was elected to this district in two thousand and six, when I saw public office at twenty-two years of age. I was fortunate enough to be elected a second time in this district as well. Served as City Council President, filled in as active mayor for a few months as well, and worked real hard with the staff, as well as city council members, to get a lot accomplished during my eight years in public office. I believe that in this critical time in our city, Danielle served as a boss of reason for the administration as well as the city council. And I believe I would be that same boss of reason to be open-minded towards moving the city forward, doing what we can to get the city back going, get it back running, and so that we can operate and serve the citizens of this city, not just the citizens of District B. Um, I've been a lifelong servant my whole life, uh, I've, I've been in public service my whole life. I've enjoyed assisting people, working with people, and I just believe that if Danielle had a say, she would ask me to do it. Um, it's not something that I'm in hot pursuit of doing because, um, this is a very challenging time for all of y'all, make God be with you. But I do believe that she would ask me to, to fill in for, because I have no desire of ever running for councilperson. And I understand that whoever take this position can't run in November, as well as the coming time, so thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Quinn, while you're approaching the podium, you will have two minutes, you will have, uh, state your name and address for the record. After the, you state your name and address, the two minutes will begin.
Jerry Woods, Quinn, two twenty Bee Old Street, good old little Buffalo, Bogalusa, Louisiana. I've come to many of these meetings, I think we got a lot of good candidates for this, uh, short term. I kind of wish some of them were going to be in there for the long term, that's not going to be good, but, uh, Michael O'Ree, I watched him when he was a councilman, he did a very good job as a councilman. He's honest and a good Christian man, and that's all I have to say about it.
I got to state my name and stuff for the record again.
State your name and address for the record.
Tobias Roberts, eleven seven, twenty-seven Avenue J. Okay, uh, I like to say something good about Michael O'Ree, now, hey, he's a good candidate, you know, we do a lot of good, and, you know, around here, but we don't want to put too much on him, you know what I'm saying? So, uh, you know, thank you, Mike, we would love to, hey, but we got our candidate though.
Next person, next person, name of the nominee. Who's that? Next candidate, nominee, not a candidate, nominee, Matt McGee. Moving forward, we'll now move, we're voting by road call, the first person will be voting on, will be Ms. Marilyn.
Is that, is that not here, or you dropped out, I didn't hear?
He is not here. Thank you.
Yo, the microphones having a hard time picking it up.
First person we're voting on tonight will be Ms. Marilyn D. Lot, vote by road call, please.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cates?
Aye.
You're more out first, I'll ask you to leave, you ask to leave, please.
Councilwoman Temples?
Aye.
Vice President Ellis?
Aye.
Vice President, uh?
Aye. So to save, to save Ms. Lot like them, you'll be able to run in November. Next candidate, Mr. Michael O'Ree, vote by road call, please.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cates?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temples?
Aye.
Vice President Ellis?
Aye.
Vice President Urban?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Michael O'Ree is now taking place of the honorable Danielle Keys, Dr. Danielle Kees. Thank you. This portion of this meeting is now adjourned. It was five to one against, uh, this law. It's five to one for Mr. O'Ree, sir. The town must determine our chances for the resolution. We'll be voting on this matter. If we to resolve Article II City Council under the authority of Section 203, Vatting of Bogalosa City Council. Now be emotional with the resolution. I have emotions. We have a motion to check, vote by road call.
Speaker, that's a good one. Aye. Councilwoman Smith? Aye. Councilwoman Kate? Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President Dallas?
Aye.
Vice President O'Ree?
Aye.
Now we'll turn this meeting over to Mr. May. I'm going to address the public through the meeting. We're going to turn the meeting over to the mayor. This next portion of the meeting is a mayor called meeting, it's not a council meeting nor a special council meeting because Mr. Mayor, you may take.
Point of order that we don't vote, it's taken during this discussion.
So, good evening. Thank you all for being here. I'd like to ask for everybody to bring some decorum. Keep it calm, keep it cool, keep it collected. This meeting is to inform the public. We have representatives from the Louisiana Legislative Auditor's Office that are here to just inform the public because I feel like we need some outside people to help us out here because everything has become so political, and we have to get back to business. So, at this time, I'll turn it over.
Hi, I'm G.B. DeWilla with the Legislative Auditor's Office. We're here for advisory services, and I'm just here to observe and see what's going on and then offer any advice when, you know, when everything's said and done. So, I know there's a lot of things that we have to learn to work together on, and we're here to kind of help that matter, and Advisory Services is a division of our office that helps people just better talk to each other and learn how to work together, and that's what we're hoping to help you with here.
Thank you. So at this time, I guess we can move into public participation. In reference, strictly in reference to the spending freeze or the budget.
My name is Glassman E. I live at 1204 North Bogalosa Street, and good evening to all of you. I'm concerned, guys, well, this is my first meeting, I apologize, and I'm going to get on board and learn what I need to learn because I'm concerned, city of this, and I love my city, and I'm going to see it go forward.
Point of order, we put a timeline, we tie the timeline in.
Two.
Two minutes. Five minutes, okay. First seat now.
At first, I want to ask the mayor, concerned a problem, and I've been told, and this is what I'm hearing, it's the budget that we have a problem with, and my concern is, you all got audience and all that, and it needs to be updated, and I was told some money ain't right, and my concern is, is that true? And if it's true, are you all able to get it all straightened out so we can move forward? And another concern is, another concern is, are the funds where they supposed to be? Do they have to be found? And my next question is, Doc, where, why not? And who's responsible? And my next question is, who's responsible for the freeze? And why? There is a freeze. Now, if everything has been solved, why is the freeze still freezing? And, you know, I'm learning. But anyway, I mean, it seems like a simple matter, you know? I'm not a politician, but I tell you what, I'm looking into it, I might be y'all next politician. My concern is, it seems like a simple matter, you should know, you should have the knowledge and understanding of how to do that, how to keep the budget going and make sure everything is going where it's supposed to go so this thing can move forward because it's hurting the city, it's hurting our children, and it's hurting Bogalosa. So, my concern is, let's get it straightened out. And if anybody want to tell me what's going on, let me know because I'm tired of hearing what everybody else is saying, I don't want to hear what you all saying.
Mr. President, could I answer that, please? Sure you can, Mr. May. I'll read, sir. Thank you. Let me point out what you've been here, we've had some problems with 2022. Let's just say that the records, some of the records have not been able to have been found, and there are some problems trying to work it together.
There's a holdup, I don't know, I can't speak for the spending freeze why it's here, but the problem seems to be that we are late with the 2022 financial report, which is due on June, was due June 30th last year. Okay, well, I can tell you that I spoke with the people that are putting together that report this morning, and they told me in two weeks it will be complete, and that it will be delivered to the auditor, and I can tell you right now, the auditor will probably take another 46 weeks to complete the audit of it. We, however, I'm going to say, the, the, I can say that, the, the. The budget is, we're trying to get past the 2024 budget. We're trying to get the council to introduce it, for some reason they don't want to. I can tell you that.
I'm sorry, the council, I wanted to.
The council won't pass, won't even introduce it, not prove it. I'm not even, we're not even asking for that right now, we're just wanting to introduce it. And they're blaming the fact that the budget introduced to them has fund balances that they think are untrue. Bottom line is, they've got a 2001 actual fund balance in front of them. They've got a 2002 that I can't provide, and that's what their problem is because we're still working on that, and that's going to take another, I don't know, maybe another six weeks to get that out, and then we have to concern ourselves with the 24, I mean, bottom line is that.
Some is.
I spoke with, I don't know if you've seen it, but Michael Wagisback, who happens to be one of the legislative big guys, told me Friday, when I told him about the budget situation and the council having a problem passing it, I told him what fund balances I had in there, they're all estimated except for the 2001 actual fund balance, and he told me that he didn't see any reason why they couldn't pass that budget like it was. So, you know, but we, I have to admit, as working for the mayor, he brought me on five months ago to help with the organization, and I came in here with the best of feelings about, I mean, my heart is with the city of Bogalosa. I worked here for 28 years before, and I know how this city is run, and I've got the feeling this council will not work with us at all.
You know what I'm saying? You know what I'm saying? Once upon a time, we can be disagreeable, we can disagree without being disagreeable, and I don't see why the council won't work with our mayor, and our mayor worked with our council to get this problem solved. Y'all got the knowledge. Y'all got the knowledge, and you got the power. Oh, they don't have the power, they got the knowledge. Oh, well, okay, I'm done. That's all I want to know. You gotta work forward, or you're hurting the city.
My name is Kelly Kane, I live at 502 Virginia Avenue. I asked this with the regular perspective, you know, and how it is. What? This mic?
Yeah, I'm speaking from the mic.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. My name is Kelly Kane, I live at 502 Virginia Avenue. I asked this with the regular perspective, you know, and how it is. That'll be quick.
I'm on once again.
Here's, here's my question.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay. My name is Kelly Kane, I live at 502 Virginia Avenue. I feel like I'm in that movie, Go For Day. Okay, I have a question for the mayor. In the past two days, I've seen things, we wrote, it says, you know, stuff was shredded, and we don't have it, and now we're hearing that we have everything and it's at the auditors. Do we have everything, or is stuff missing? Sir?
Since we missed this, this January joint.
For 2020, do we have everything, or is stuff missing right this second?
So, basically what you're asking, you're saying that we talked about missing items, but now we're saying we have everything. At one point, things were missing. When you can't find documents on the bank statement, it tells you who the city paid, so you call that person and say, hey, would you happen to have a copy of any paperwork, any receipts, that sort of thing with the city? And that's how we got some of the documentation back. So, it's not a false dichotomy between the two. It's they were missing, some things were missing, and we had to put in extra work to get it.
Okay, so right now, you have all the documents that were found, and you have everything now?
We have turned in as much as we can to Isner and.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
We have turned in as much as, everything that we have, we have turned over to Isner and.
And you have everything that they need turned in?
To my knowledge, yes.
Okay, that sounds great. So this is going to be resolved fairly soon, probably, right?
Hopefully so, yes ma'am.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thomas Jackson, Jr., 219 Redmer Street. First gonna read the law, the head of hope all our life, to our honor mayor, and I wish I could say I've said it, counsel. But, I don't know whether y'all are against the mayor for his age or his rights, but you, the congressman is not giving the mayor an opportunity to hit y'all. You is not giving a citizen of Bogalosa what we voted y'all for. Y'all are against the mayor. Mayor didn't do nothing about y'all vote. Y'all want to, with all this gun violence, you gun violence, y'all are going to be against him for his juvenile summer program, and y'all need to vote for that. You know, the mayor is trying to get himself Bogalosa. Y'all, all y'all doing is hurting yourself Bogalosa. All of you are, let me recall, you are, you are going to y'all's job. And I'm going to get, call Mr. Ted Drummond tomorrow, who you will come and ask him to direct me how they're coming, so I can work with the mayor. Y'all need to work with our mayor. Y'all, I don't know whether y'all voted for the mayor or y'all did. The citizen of Bogalosa voted for him. And is y'all age? Some of y'all thought mayor or y'all vote. Is that what y'all think? Y'all would want y'all to be supported him?
Thank you.
So why not support him?
Thank you, your team.
This is a Bogalosa vote here.
Thank you, your team.
All right, let me stop this right now. I would like to address the mayor and ask him a question. Legislative auditors are standing here. Is it a fact, because we got different information, we called Mr. Don McLean last week after our April 12 finance meeting, that he was still missing documents for the 22 audit? Now, listen closely. Are you saying, and in front of everybody with these recordings running, reporters running, you're saying that all 22 finance, 22 audit information has been handed over to Isner and Amber, better known as Poston, another way? Just that, this, we're not looking for a comeback, we're asking for a direct answer.
I told you a little while ago, Mr. Irving, that I talked to him this morning, and there's not the two items there waiting for, and they're mine, and they will be to him by Wednesday morning.
Okay. The next thing, probably we got is a timeline material talking about finishing the audits. Now, there's accounts in this room, and I can tell you that it's, we called Ms. Becky Hammond, and she said, due to a fact, they're in a new accounting period, that calling rigs will take another three to four months. Now legislative auditors, I'm addressing you. Do you agree with the mayor's timeline, or do you agree with Colin Riggs's timeline?
I can't really give you a good estimate on that. I mean, as good as you can, the whole point was there. If the records are good from Isner and Amber. If the records are good from Isner and Amber, they should be able to do it in a quicker fashion than normal, but I don't know how long it'll take because I don't know the complexity of everything.
And also legislative auditors, how soon will we, once after the mayor hands in and it's been certified by our auditor and handed into legislative auditor, how long will it be before we come off the noncompliance list?
So, you can be off as soon as it comes in, and everything's processed, you'll be off the noncompliance list immediately, except you do have the 23 audit that's due on June 30th, and so that may roll into where you may roll back onto a noncompliance list, the 2023 report that's in there.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Proceed, Mr. Austin, you will have two minutes, please state your name and address for the record.
And if she couldn't get me my answer, I was going to the U.S. Attorney Department. And if they couldn't get me that, I was going to the Attorney General of the United States of America to rock that answer. That man back there, Mr. Bailey, he knows the money. And I'm glad the mayor brought him on board. This is ridiculous that y'all kind of push this ban and to accept it when it's a risk. I'm here on Facebook. And then a young lady that thinks he was born, I don't know her name, the gentleman speaks. And she posted the receipt of a little over $2,000. It was invoiced to the city of Bogalusa. And it had a phone number on that. And I called that phone number, and they said, we are shredded. Well, the election was on the 8th of November, October. And the shredder invoiced at the 25th of October. Now, why do you want to have a shredder? You get a lot of people there. You got a little administration coming in. You love your city, you're supposed to make things convenient for them, they're coming in a little strength.
Thank you, Mr. Austin.
The only way that you were scared of documenting, you were trying to hide it. But when it's ready, it's not the only one, it's yours. Because all of these council people sit on that council. And I had one that no longer there, get up in the upper layers, leave and come in, you just did a council. But she's responsible too. So, when it might not be long anymore, take a ride. You are ignoring the citizens of this city. They spoke tonight, who they wanted, you didn't listen. But you're gonna listen. You're gonna listen, you're gonna listen. You're gonna listen. Brother, I'm sorry, we'll take it tomorrow.
Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address for the record.
Susan Ratliff, Pines, 132 Levee Drive, Bogalusa. Each and every one of you councilmen, when you're there, you work hard for that position when you was running. We need that same hard work that you did when you was running. We elected each and every one of you guys to help and represent Bogalusa. You came with yourself, or how you feel personally about nobody. This was right. We want what's right for Bogalusa. I turn a dime. If you go back and count, how many kids? Hell, stay alive. If you a mother, a father, grandma, any, a student. These kids are being slammed in the streets. And y'all are arguing, it take more energy to butt angry and bump and bump, 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 bump. Why can't y'all take that sudden energy and agree and help Bogalusa? Help our mayor? Y'all be all that energy, and the fighting, and the complaining, and the finding something wrong. And each and every one of us gonna be held accountable for what you did. When you ran, you said you was gonna suffer, deserve. When you ran, you wasn't gonna put your personal feelings on what you put on this table. I paid for it, stay alive. It could be your child, it could be my child. Anybody that got a child twelve to forty, and they're black male should be scared. Prayer change things. We need y'all. We need y'all to work with our mayor. I don't care if he like it or don't like it, do what you like. Right, and all the things that stand are right. I love everybody, I love the Lord, and y'all who say you love the Lord, they show.
I'm quite busy sanitizer. Frank Bays, 141 Cedar Road. Okay, all jokes aside, guess what? This town is not exactly lifetime, I mean, what's that channel called? Hallmark? Yeah, we need to fix this town. And, you know, while others are talking, it would be nice if you, the council, could like look at us, because we're the people who want the change. And we're kind of like getting a bit sick and tired of nothing happening. And people are asking me, well, who are you with? Are you with those people? Are you with the Gcos? I'm on Bogalusa's side, because, you know, that's the, they're the people who are losing. And you know what? Just to make it quite clear. Hey, how many of you on the council have children? Put up your hand. Do you really want them to grow up in a Bogalusa like this? Yes or no? Yes, like this? Like this? Tomorrow, there's room for improvement. There's a hell of a lot of room for improvement. You, sir, I guess a lot of you don't really like you've got a new mayor, do you? But, hey, let's call a spade a spade. This is just old fashioned, good old boys, and I'm not gonna fucking lie.
Mr. Quinn, please state your name and address for the record, sir.
I'm still Kenny Quinn, I'm still living Bogalusa on Beale Street, 220 Beale Street there is. I thought when the meeting began, we were not supposed to be downgrading other people. We're supposed to be speaking about the subject at hand, both council, mayor, and the auditors. It seemed like everybody picked somebody to get down. And I'll tell you this, you'll laugh at this, but back in the early 60s, Big J and Chief Richards couldn't write a song. They just get all the old blues songs, copy those guys. Their manager, Andrew Little Gole, put them in the kitchen, said, if you not coming out of here, till you get together or writing your song. I think we need to put the council and the mayor in a room and not let them out, and they get together. Thank you.
Emma Dixon, 717 St. Mary's Place, here in Bogalusa. I think most of you know me. As a matter of fact, I was referred to online a few days ago as a sweet little old lady. I didn't think of myself as an old lady, but I am. I'm here to speak because I watched the previous council meeting at home on video. And there was a lot of concern from two council people about the grant writing position. Yeah, it was on video. And what I was going to do is write a letter to the council president because I don't think many people know what the grant writer does. Not only does the grant writer write grants, the grant writer has to close these grants out. And for the person who said they didn't know how I got this job, I want them to know that I wrote my first grant in 1980 for locking missiles in space in Sunvale, California. This is for us. In addition, I agree with most of the audience, and that subject is passed, we do need a grant writer. What is happening now in the city, and I'm sure the auditors know it, that we're trying to close out several grants. And if we do not close those grants out, the city will have to repay that money. And the first call, and I hope I collapse, the first call we got was on, and we're all excited about the man you board and the grant opening, but that grant has not touched. And if we don't close it out, we have to pay the state back $700,000. And what my work has been over the last couple of months is locating the document that we need, my time up.
Finish your statement.
To close those grants out. When I saw this, and I hope the mayor doesn't mind me saying this, when I saw the comments on the council meeting, we don't need a grant writer, we don't need grants, we don't need state grants, and we don't need federal grants, I don't know how the city would operate without grant funding. So, and I hope the mayor doesn't mind me sharing this either, and it'd be real quick. After I saw that video, I could not sleep. And what I thought was, maybe the council is not aware of what a grant writer does. And so, with that being said, and I hope he doesn't mind, I submitted my letter of resignation as grant writer to the city. But, please, but I told the mayor that I would work as a volunteer because I love this city. I love this city. And it's not about money for me, it's about seeing my city move ahead. And I hope that the council will take its necessary duties and do what we need to have done so we can move the city forward. Thank you.
I would like to say one thing. Thank you, Ms. Dixon. You've always treated me and some others up here with respect. And yes, I do know why grant writer is, and I know the importance of it, and I was shocked to hear that you have resigned. And I did not know nothing about this. There's stuff that goes on here, we don't even know what goes on here. Why do people believe us? Why do people believe?
A key part of this is I go by the tape to continue to support our uncle mayor and support this state.
Ashley McMillan, 713 Avenue K. Is there room in the budget for a step ladder next time? No, I'm sure. I wrote a letter, um, thank you. Dear City of Bogalusa, I am writing to you today with neither complaint nor praise. I mean to speak on facts, implore your help, and ask questions. It is a fact that no matter what side of the table you are on, being a civic leader is hard. It is also a fact that I would never wish to be in any of your shoes. It is a fact that the citizens of Bog, it is the citizens of Bogalusa that suffer each and every day, city council meetings become a media circus. It is a fact that there are several instances of lack of decorum from the city council, the mayor's office, and citizens from this very city which they claim to care about. No one is completely absolved from fault. I am one of your citizens who watches from afar and sees the unraveling of the fabric that makes up our city. We are threadbare, we need mending. How do we begin to mend? I read words like unity and togetherness, but have yet to see it. What is the reason for the discord between the mayor's office and the city council and the citizens of Bogalusa? Are the words of solidarity just that, empty words? Where is the full transparency? I watch the videos from these meetings, and more often than not, I am left with more questions than answers. The shouting, mudslinging, ultimatums are all words I would describe these meetings if anyone were to ask me about how our city operates. Tensions are at an all-time high, and even sharing my own words with you now, I have a few ounces of fear as I am unsure what to expect. Actions and words have been said and displayed that I would have only thought to see or hear in a movie, not in my hometown. As a single mother of a growing child here, I can think of nothing but urging her to leave and never come back. When I ask her what she wants to be when she's older, she tells me, and I can, and all I can say is be whatever you want, as long as you leave Bogalusa. What reason will she have to stay here if this is how things are going to be handled? I understand that things can't be fixed in a day or a week.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan.
Therefore, I am hosting a challenge to anyone sitting or standing in this room. Listen to understand.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan.
I'm not, I'm not finished.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan. You have your two minutes. Thank you. You have your two minutes.
I'm not hollering, I'm not acting ugly, I'm just, I'm just...
I'm being nice. You have your two minutes. Everybody else has got to have two minutes to continue, Ms. McMillan. Thank you.
Can I just say this last part?
Proceed.
My teacher, my eighth grade science teacher shared a quote that even after all these years, I still remember. Intelligence speaks for itself, ignorance is above all. In other words, no one will know how ignorant you are until you open your mouth. This room is called the war room, and it is a fitting name because there is a war going on in Bogalusa, and it happens in each and every one of these meetings. What are we not fighting for? If not for each other, then surely not against each other. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Cassetti.
Richard Cassetti, 764 Marshall Richardson Road. Since I have two minutes, I'm gonna put it real quick. And mayor, I want you to listen real closely. I want to know this from these people, do we need to keep this freeze on for the mayor? Is he stealing? Do we need to put handcuffs on his arms so he can't spend any money? I mean, mayor, I can't believe it that they're holding you back like that. And I can't believe this, that this community wanted that other lady to be in there, and they all voted the opposite way. Okay? So, that shows me, mayor, that these people wanted that lady, but they all went against it because somebody else wanted it. So, that means, mayor, whatever you want over there, you can forget about getting off this table. You're not invited to eat off of this table, mayor. So, remember that. You're not invited. So, remember this, I watched what all you did the other night, Monday night. It was disgusting. I could not believe what you did, what Mark did watching you, he's laughing at you. Kenny stopping the mayor from talking. Gloria talking over the mayor, actually had the mic. Gloria, you've been on this council so long, you've been on this council so long. Kenny, Mark, you've been on this council so long, you've been on this council so long. Learn how to act. It's the other thing, Kenny, when you go yelling at me for saying something, I love it when you're quiet like that, and that's the way it needs to be. Let the people talk. Let the mayor talk. He's important. Thank you.
Standing at the name, 1537 North Roan Street, Bogalusa. I am standing on behalf of a group of citizens. There was a letter petition in a very limited period of time where letters went out and told the community and tried to get as many signatures who would to address the concerns concerning our city. There were over 250 signatures that were gathered, and I apologize, Mr. Brandon, I handed you a list, you had no idea. I apologize to the president as well, he had no idea what the petition was all about. And I hope perhaps that you already get a copy of it. I don't want to read it all, it'll take my two minutes of...
Therefore, I am hosting a challenge to anyone sitting or standing in this room. Listen to understand.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan.
I'm not, I'm not finished.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan. You have your two minutes. Thank you. You have your two minutes.
I'm not, I'm not acting ugly. I'm just, I'm just.
I'm being nice. You have your two minutes. Everybody else has got to have two minutes to continue, Ms. McMillan. Thank you.
Can I just say this last part?
Proceed.
My teacher, my eighth grade science teacher shared a quote that even after all these years, I still remember. "Intelligence speaks for itself, ignorance is above all." In other words, no one will know how ignorant you are until you open your mouth. This room is called the war room, and it is a fitting name because there is a war going on in Bogalusa, and it happens in each and every one of these meetings. What are we not fighting for? If not for each other, then surely not against each other. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Cassetti.
Richard Cassetti, 764 Marshall Richardson Road. Since I have two minutes, I'm going to put it real quick. And Mayor, I want you to listen real closely. I want to know this from these people. Do we need to keep this freeze on for the mayor? Is he stealing? Do we need to put handcuffs on his arms? So he can't spend any money? I mean, Mayor, I can't believe it that they're holding you back like that. And I can't believe this, that this community wanted that other lady to be in there, and they all voted the opposite way. Okay? So, that shows me, Mayor, that these people wanted that lady, but they all went against it because somebody else wanted it. So, that means, Mayor, whatever you want over there, you can forget about getting off this table. You're not invited to eat off of this table, Mayor. So remember that. You're not invited. So remember this. I watched what all yous did the other night. Monday night. It was disgusting. I could not believe what you did, what Mark did watching you. He's laughing at you. Kenny stopping the mayor from talking. Gloria talking over the mayor, actually had the mic. Gloria, you've been on this council so long. You've been on this council so long. Kenny, Mark, you've been on this council so long. You've been on this council so long. Learn how to act. It's the sad thing, Kenny. When you go yelling at me for saying something, I love it when you're quiet like that. And that's the way it needs to be. Let the people talk. Let the mayor talk. He's important. Thank you.
Standing, Daniel. 1537 North Raw Street, Bogalusa. I am standing on behalf of a group of citizens. There was a letter petition in a very limited period of time where letters went out and told the community and tried to get as many signatures who would to address the concerns concerning our city. There were over 250 signatures that were gathered. And I apologize, Ms. Brandon, I handed you a list, you had no idea. I apologize to the president as well, he had no idea what the petition was all about. And I hope perhaps that you all will get a copy of it. I don't want to read it all, it'll take my two minutes of it. But however, on behalf of the 250 signatures that has been collected, we are asking respectfully that the board would very, very seriously consider lifting the spending freeze. I was in a meeting and it was said that one of the reasons why the freeze is there is to keep the mayor from hiring new employees. If that's the case, I don't understand, maybe I don't understand government, why there would be a freeze to freeze everything that has been frozen. So we're asking if you would very seriously consider lifting the spending freeze since my good friend Mike O'Ree has replaced Dr. Keys. We thank you for that. Also, we're asking if the mayor has presented, or if you have been presented with a 2024 budget, why isn't it being seriously considered to pass? Is there something that perhaps the citizens don't know, perhaps I don't know or understand to your answer? I'll be very briefly. We're asking you to really, really consider those things. Our children are suffering. I work with a plan where individuals who coach Little League all around, baseball, football, the whole works. And I don't sleep because parents are calling me concerning their children, and they want to know what the preacher's doing, what is going on? Why the mayor do this? The mayor get blamed for everything. And I don't believe with the program that has been implemented, that has been very positive with our kids, that the mayor would put a freeze on those programs.
All right, thank you very much.
So we're asking if you would very, 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 just take it to heart and consider lifting these things so that our city can move forward, so that our kids can be productive, so that the parents could quit calling me. I think what I'm gonna do is give them all of you also. And have them call you.
We are, our numbers are posted.
I know, but obviously they don't have them. And when they call me, maybe I should get them to them. But, but it's very serious, and it's not, it's not a joke. Our city's going backwards. It has to just start if we're fighting a human, and we can't make progress because of whatever. So we're asking, we're asking if you all would just really consider lifting that, approving the budget, so that we can move forward.
All right, thank you. Before the next constituent, the mayor used his veto pen. So therefore, the spending freeze at this time is lifted. That's the, our course, he did use his veto pen. So, just letting you know that before we go any further. That means it's a business issue as well.
Uh, thanks, sir. My name is Quintavious Brumfield. 600 Collins Avenue, Bogalusa, Louisiana. And now what I want to address, like, consider lifting the, uh, the spending freeze. And as you already said. And the only reason I was gonna say it because I just, I see this paper, and it was talking about like, a lot of things for like, the youth, that they won't be able to do that, like basketball, sports, and stuff like that. Well, I work with a lot of kids, and like, you know, young kids, like two-year-olds, five-year-olds, and stuff like that. And like, when they tend to get bored, the first thing they do is go hit another child. The first thing they do is go do something negative. And I grew up in this community, you know? I just grew around hanging with a lot of my friends, five, 20-year-olds, boys. And the first thing you think about when bored, when you have nothing to do, we're gonna do something negative, don't get in trouble, we're gonna do something exciting. So I just want to avoid a lot of that happening now by, you know, not lifting the spending freeze. You know, that would be, you know, terrible for the youth, because they need something to do. And out of mind is the devil's workshop, and that's all I had to say, man.
My name is Amy Quaid. I'm sorry, little horse tonight. 110 Grand Drive, Bogalusa. I, I hear people coming up and giving expression. That wasn't counsel having done. Everything is their fault. Let me tell you, I've seen many finance meetings as an observer because I am a citizen of Bogalusa. And I asked, and it sits there, and they would leave financial records from the city, which the city would not give to them. They're still not giving them all the records. The city is el smooth and responsible for enforcing the budget of Bogalusa. They don't know if we got any money or we got way up there in deficit, we can't find out. Nobody knows what's going on. I do know that every time something comes up, such as the freeze and other things in the past, every time things don't go the mayor's way, he turns around and tries to use it like a war against the council. Saying it's all the council's fault. Let me tell you, if you really did not just listen to what it told to you, and you were ready, so then you would know it's exactly the opposite. It is the mayor's fault. It is not the council's fault. They're making, they're making, they have to do their job. They cannot pass a budget that doesn't have figures in it. That is illegal. They want to judge the bill for mayor. And he must have got it done. I just want you to know, the Little League problems and all that, they look at Bogalusa, don't like it. They didn't like it. Nobody said that that was wanting to be crazy. Except the mayor. They used to want to pick the chosen. I don't think they know I was there, even though. I didn't have to talk to the council. I would talk if everyone shut up.
All right. Ms. Brandon, you're too late. We can't hear him because they're being disrespectful to those people who actually do know what's going on.
I know, that was a game you played with the faculty board together.
They don't care to hear the truth. They don't care to hear the truth. That's the reason why WPHU and Channel 4, not y'all, need to come find out the truth. Y'all need to start looking into it. She was speaking the truth. Thank you. Thank you.
Let's bring her back in, y'all. Corner. Okay, y'all.
My name is Gregory Brownfield.
One second, Mr. Brownfield.
827.
Mr. Brownfield. One second, I need to, I need to address former Councilwoman Graham.
Thank you, we're here, thank you.
Ms. Graham, I'm glad that you brought that up. You've been on the council for a while. Everybody is stating that the sky is falling. But, every year from 2015 all the way up until 2022, the city has been laid on their yearly audits. Go to the state auditor's website and look up the City of Bogalusa, and you'll see the same thing. We are doing our best amidst so many challenges that I don't even think you would be able to comprehend the complexity of everything that we have dealt with since being here. A lot of things that happened at your feet, you set on this council. But I'm glad that you brought up the fund balances because that brings up a major, um, major question. The council has stated many times that they refused to introduce the 2024 budget due to fund balances, but we have reached out to legislative auditor's office. Can you all please speak more in detail about the fund balances for the budget? And whether the council and whether the council can pass the 2024 budget?
I would actually ask y'all to come to the microphone so everybody's here. Audience, please be quiet and let the legislative auditor speak. Thank you.
So to clarify, Mayor, your question is, can a budget be passed without an accurate beginning fund balance?
Our ending balance.
Our ending balance, is that what you're asking?
Right, based on the situation that we're in, we have 2021 audited figures. That's the last audited year that we have. How would you proceed?
A budget can be passed without a beginning fund.
On all the laws, let the legislative auditor speak. This is extremely important to solving this. Now, won't it stop, listen, listen to the mayor's发言, auditor. Proceed, ma'am.
However, the council must be comfortable with the numbers and comfortable with the budget. They do not have to pass a budget if they do not have their questions answered. They have a right to question, and they have a right to the answers, but they can pass it without the accurate beginning and ending fund balances stated on the foot.
Got you, which goes to the point. We can't answer your questions if we don't know the specific question. So I am going to publicly ask you all, please go to the drawing board, write what concerns you have, let's put it in the public record, and let's answer all of the questions publicly. We need to move forward.
We need to work together. We need to get the questions answered. We need to be able to ask the questions and get them answered, and get answers that we're comfortable with.
Question. If the fund balances are missing from the budget, the beginning and ending balance, can that budget be passed?
From my understanding, yes. The only thing that is a priority budget is the revenues and expenses, unless you're using fund balance as part of the funding of those expenses.
Now, we have a television camera rolling from Channel 6. Listen very closely to my question. Will any of us on the council go to jail if we pass a budget that does not have a beginning or ending balance? Please state that.
I cannot answer.
Only on the budget?
I cannot answer that uncertainty, but my understanding is, no. I would ask that you go to the town attorney because I am not familiar with the town charter. You need to speak to the town attorney, you need to get comfortable with the numbers, and you need to address your questions with the mayor and the town attorney.
Intervention today, Mayor Gloria Kate. Uh, how does this, how does this refer to the Louisiana Budget Government Act? That is what we've been, you know, according to your act. So could you expound on that?
So, the Louisiana Local Government Budget Act, you are required to budget your revenues and expenses.
Okay, could you expound on that, please?
It's, it's, there are certain things within the charter that have to be addressed separately. The Louisiana Local Government Budget Act, you are required to budget your revenues and expenses. Your fund balance beginning is not always going to be accurate. Most of the time, the budget is required to be done before the prior fiscal year has ended. So therefore, those numbers can be adjusted, you can make amendments to those at any point. And you as the council can amend the budget.
I just want to say, thank you so much. I think that answered a lot of our questions and it addressed the problems that we're having, so.
So with that said, technically, council, we could introduce the budget at next council meeting. Since the State of Louisiana just cleared that up. With no, no offense to, no offense to Attorney May. But Attorney May's not that familiar with certain functions that y'all all.
Okay, I would, I understand, I would like to say something.
I do just want to state, I am not an attorney. So I do suggest you do consult with the town attorney. He is more familiar with the laws than I am.
That's very good.
Gregory Brownfield, I think a lot of people know me. I said, 827. Robert Ball, here in Bogalusa. I think one big thing that we are not looking at and the audience, I'd like to know, is it against the law for public records to be destroyed? Let me say what I'm saying. Because it seems to me we got a mayor here working hard. He came in, records was destroyed. And he's being penalized for that. Now, if it's not against the law, there should be some provisions that should be given to the mayor. Now, I'm gonna say this. A lot of people in here in the council feel like they are coming up there for the mayor. But the reason why they are coming for the mayor is because he's trying to do what's right for this city. If the mayor was not trying to do what's right for this city, we wouldn't be with him. Now, it seems to me that either it's against the law for records to be destroyed. Or some provisions should be made for a mayor who's trying to work under these conditions. And it seems to me that the council, because we all supposed to love Bogalusa, that you would get behind our mayor in one way. You know, everybody need to take a breath and smile. I look at the mayor, and I could be mad with him, you know? He got a good head of hair, and I'm bald headed. As a matter of fact, I think the mayor called me bald headed. I could be mad with him about that, but I can't. And he had a 22 budget that was thrown to him at his feet. And he's been working hard to get it done. All I hear is, "Do you have everything?" And it wasn't him that made the mess. Now, for a lot of this stuff now, I'm glad, I think I heard that the freeze is lifted. I'm gonna ask the legislative auditors, I'm gonna ask you, find out if it's not, make some provisions for our mayor because the stuff wasn't given. Because this city needs to operate. And I think all of you know what I'm saying. And may I still think I'm mad with you for calling me bald headed?
Tobias Robinson, 1127 Avenue, Jane. What y'all just seen was the auditor spoke and said that the budget can't be passed. And y'all seen them come up with every excuse not to do it. Everything she said, they had a rebuttal for. Mr. Mark, don't cut the mustard, pass the budget. All y'all come together. Bogalusa need people to come together. Kids dying every other week. It seem that way. Because I be knowing both sides. I know the little boy who did it, and the little boy that got killed. Come on now. This is what y'all alone. Y'all, this is on y'all watch. Pretty much. The mayor doing everything he can to attack the youth and do what he gotta do for you. Y'all doing everything y'all can to shake it down. When y'all gonna start up? Y'all working for a mayor that's who no longer in office. Shit at home. And you know why I say that? Because when y'all come here, y'all get nothing done. Y'all working against the city. Y'all put lawsuits in from 21, 22 budget, when y'all remember this man wasn't there. And wholly unaccountable for, done shake, done shake the city down for. Get, let me clip, Ms. Wendy Probeck is no longer there.
Good evening, Mr. Brownfield. Please state your name and address for the recognition right now.
My name is John McNabb, 222 Bourbon Street. I have a quick question, and I'll pause, that way y'all can respond. At any point, have y'all, as a council, elected to make a mayor or a mayor's designate liable or responsible to pay back any payments that have been made or incur any debts that were incurred on behalf of the city? Has any mayor, under any of y'all's time as council? had to pay back any payments or debts that they have incurred as mayor? I'll pause for y'all's response. I don't yield my time for that. So I yield for a response, and that pauses my time, and then I'll take up that one.
Not to my knowledge.
So to reclaim my time. No payments shall be made under Section 5-04 Subsection 8 of our city charter. No payment shall be made or an obligation incurred against any allotment or appropriation except in accordance with appropriations that are duly made, unless a mayor or a mayor's designate first certifies that there is sufficient unencumbered balance to cover said payments or debts. Some of y'all have been here since the prior administration. The reason I bring this up, to reclaim my time, is that we have outstanding payments that we don't have any documentation for back at the end of 2022, which is why everybody has a problem with the funding balance. If we do not have proper documentation, that the allotted amount of funds weren't available under subsection B of dash 502, or 504 of the city charter, the council has the ability to file suit and hold a mayor or a mayor's designate responsible and liable for any payments made that were not done properly. If the funding balance is that big of an issue that we have to stop and cease all operations, then it's high time that we start using the powers at our disposal to rectify those funding issues that are missing and make the people that were responsible for them either produce the documentation or hold them personally and financially liable.
That will be discovered when the 22 audit is handed in to the legislative auditors. Once that's finished, that will be discovered.
Have they provided you with the documentation for those payments? If not, they are not in compliance, and the people that made those payments did it without being in compliance, and you have the authority to execute that.
My name is Kelly Thang.
Please state your name and address for the reference.
My name is Kelly Thang. I have a question for you. I wasn't talking?
Yeah, you got it. Speak up.
If, if we're not, um, if we don't have any ending balances for funds, how do we know that we're not, like, writing hot checks for stuff or going over what's allotted in the city? How can we function like that?
And I don't have an answer to that. And all I can tell you is the local government budget act requires revenues and expenses to be budgeted. So if you have the revenues to cover your expenses, that's taken care of as part of the local government budget act.
So the budget that's submitted needs to have numbers for their, for the revenue and what they spent last year?
No. The proposed budget has to have revenues and expenses budgeted, so the revenues and expenses have to tie off of each other for the proposed budget.
Where can we find out what was spent last year?
That will be coming out when the audit is done.
All right, Ms. Corsetti.
Deborah Corsetti, 764 Marshall Richardson Road. I just want to thank everyone for coming out here, for their enthusiasm, for coming up to speak. Even though some people didn't quite keep the decorum, the council did, and the mayor's people did. And I want to appreciate y'all for doing that. Because I know that's a difficult seat to sit in. And I think we might have had a breakthrough tonight with the legislative auditors being here and answering some questions firsthand. So I hope we can come together and move forward and maintain decorum. Appreciate everyone.
Faith Pearl, 1931 D Wade Place. I like to say this to the citizens of Bogalusa. We have some councilors sitting here, do not respect us. We chose the one we wanted to take their CJG seat, but they disrespected us. And when people disrespect the citizen, I ain't issued with that. So it's time for you council to put your thing in cap on, because you all got to come back around to us. And when you all come around to us again, I will do my best to try to get you all out of your seat, because y'all do not have no respect for us. It don't make any sense that this is going on where it's going on about the budget. I've been sitting here in Bogalusa on the 5th, this is my filthy administration I've been under. I've never seen anybody talk about putting no mayor on the freeze. In the previous administration, I think all of them borrowed money. This man haven't borrowed any money, but y'all wanna shut it down. So who got y'all doing this? Can y'all hear me? Because I know it's not, you all. I know it's not. So come on with it, tell them who got y'all doing this? Who told y'all to put this freeze on this man? I think you could be right. And another thing, I like to know, this freeze that y'all had on him, couldn't be because you all tried to stop him from having to report his chief? That's fact. Because, Ms. Kate, I just like you. The way you going, going visiting her, you don't fit my plan. I like people who business the right way. You understand? Conspiracy work, I do not like. And I see conspiracy work with you. So it's time after this crap. Is that like this young man holding the sign up? It's time for everybody to change in Bogalusa, and everybody get right. So let's come on. If y'all gonna continue to work those in front of me, you gotta show me something.
If I made, if I made a twist that I was respectful to you. First of all, first of all, this freeze, this freeze was done because of the 2022 closing. We have never had, we have never been on the non-compliance list. I've looked on the records for the last 20 years. This freeze was always, and as is, to get to the bottom of how we can resolve this issue. This freeze never included any essential, no essential, such as police, fire, uh, the, 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 uh, actual, uh, community development for our children. That has not ever been part of this, this freeze. It has never been, it has never, I posit that we, that we have actually, you could, if you were here at our last council meeting, you'll see what was read off on the freeze. And I'm not gonna argue with you, uh, Mr. Faith. Now, now, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Now, now, now that the legislative auditor has said this budget can be passed as it is, and Mr. Bailey said, tonight, it can be passed as is, I'm gonna have a problem with it. Because like I said, because like I said, oh, I'm, I'm not going, I, I am not going. Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, everyone. I'm, I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna be held liable for any male feces in office according to the local government budget act. But if they're saying everything can be passed, everything is going, that's fine with me.
We're gonna go, since I called this meeting, we're gonna go ahead and adjourn. But before we do, I just wanna publicly thank the Louisiana Legislative Auditor Council. Let's bring it back, let's bring it back.
I agree with you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, as well, because we did call in. We wanted some, some answers today as well.
Thank you for that. That's a positive step. So I'd like to thank you, because those are few and far between. But again, thank you all for coming out, moving forward. I hope the plan is to introduce the budget. In the intro, I'd like to, again, ask the council, any concerns you have, please submit them to my office in writing. We'll get you back your answers in writing, just for the sake of transparency for the public. I'd just like you all to keep our community in prayer, because these are some challenging times outside of politics. Our country is going through it. We have a few changes at the state going on, as well as here in the city. And change is uncomfortable, but a lot of times, change is necessary. So thank you for being here for the ride. I'd like to ask that in the future, let's just continue to work toward more decorum. Like, as Gladys stated, you can disagree without being disagreeable, and that's something that I'm working on. I'm a work in progress. I'm planning to keep working on it. But I'm happy for the progress that was made tonight. So thank you, have a great day.